I'm not asking for your resignation because I'm not a resident here. That would be unfair. But, a change of heart. And a real change of heart in the name of good people is what I would be asking you to do. And your fellow citizens on the council as well. A change of heart. We have to watch the language we use in public discourse. And especially as elected officials. I myself ran for public office four years ago in Oak Park. For the same position as you have. So, I urge you as elected officials, all of you, to watch your language when you are talking about people. Because it has implications over and beyond your own personal selves. We might claim a right to free speech, but we also have a responsibility when we use that speech. And especially when we are in the public eye. And I really beg you to take this to heart. You've heard many, many stories tonight. And you really need to think about this. And I will continue to pray for each one of you in my parish. Because God knows we need His help. And we need to make sure that God's arms are big enough to embrace everybody. All of you and everyone that lives in Troy and that lives in the state of Michigan. Those arms are wide. And they're there to embrace no differences. No gender differences, no nationalities, no sexual orientation. It's small. We're all wide and we're all part of that embrace. So I want you to think about that. And no religion can tell us that that embrace wasn't meant for everybody. And you know what this symbol is. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, please.
Hi, Mayor Daniels. I came here to congratulate you on your great win.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That pillow, it wasn't feathers, it was filled with a solid piece of foam. I'm going to help you put it back together. What Mr. McLeish said about forgiveness, you asked for our forgiveness, and we should accept that and we should give you our forgiveness. It seems to me there's a bigger agenda here than just, I wonder how many of these people who were bussed in speaking of that transit system? It seems like there's a bigger agenda here. When we get a conservative candidate in the politics, everybody goes against that person. You know, President Obama said something once on a late-night show about handicapped people. Nobody came to their roar about that. President Obama said that. Everybody let that go. Keith Overman didn't say anything about it. And now you say something, ask for forgiveness, we should grant it to you, and forget it. The transit system, there's nobody riding that train. When I've gone to Chicago and by train, I go to Ann Arbor. It's a lot faster by Ann Arbor. You don't have to go through Detroit or Dearborn. So who wants to go over here through Detroit anyway? We used to call, I used to work in that area, I used to work in Detroit, and along that train route, we called it the Ho Chi Minh Trail back then. That was in the 70s. So to me, this seems like a big special interest group. That's the problem with a democracy, and that's what we've probably grown into a democracy. This is mob, this is mob rule. What we should have, what we were supposed to have was a constitutionally limited republic with individual rights for everyone. Not mob, not a mob like this. I feel bad for you, I feel very sorry for you with all this. And people bring up discrimination. We have laws against discrimination. Why don't we follow those laws? We put these judges in power that let everybody out. Why don't they, when they arrest these people, put them behind bars if they're going to, if they're discriminating? So that's all I guess I'd like to say. Thanks for being there, and I hope you have a thick skin.
Thank you. Leslie? Leslie, if you'll wait a moment, I'm going to call the next 10 people. Gerard Puskas, Mark Higginbotham, Michelle Hodges, Kumar Bat, Edward Bondi, Mike Neme, James Savage, Martin Howellak, Mary Ann Bernetti.
Thank you. Sure, I have props. Good evening, Mayor Daniels, City Council members. John. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Leslie Ann Thompson. I was born in the city of Detroit, but when I was 14, my parents moved me to Troy because racial tension was becoming an issue at the high school I was to attend in the fall. They wanted me to be safe, so instead, I graduated from Troy High School in 1975. For those of you looking at my Troy High School letter sweater with confusion, I went to a 50s party, reversed the numbers. I did actually graduate in '75. To help put myself through college, I worked for the city of Troy. First as a camp counselor at Camp Kishkako in '77 and '78, and then the next four years as a camp director. I also held several positions throughout college and shortly after graduation with the city of Troy. In the recreation department, I ran the programs for adults and children with special needs. I ran after-school latchkey. I worked with senior citizens and even once received a commendation from the mayor of Troy for performing CPR on a senior citizen at the Troy Community Center. I also worked as a groundskeeper at Sylvan Glen Golf Course, and I worked for the DPW Department doing ball diamond and park maintenance. After I graduated with my teaching degree, I substitute taught in the Troy School District. In 1982, I was offered my first full-time job as the program director at the Boys and Girls Club of Troy. Two years later, I would be named executive director and at 27-years-old became the youngest executive director of a Boys and Girls Club in the country. I also became very involved in my community. In 1984, I was named Outstanding Young Woman of Troy by the Troy J.C.'s. In the late 1980s, I was made the honorary mayor of Troy and represented the city of Troy in the Wolverine 200, a bike ride on Belle Isle. Also around that time, I was the grand marshal of the Troy Days Parade. In 1991, I was honored at the Troy Community Awards Banquet by both the Optimist Club and the Troy Women's Association as a member of the year for my leadership, involvement, generosity, commitment to the community. In 1991, I was the first female president of the Troy Optimist Club. Also in 1991, I was the president of the Troy Women's Association, then served two years as a chair of L-shelf. I served on the Board of Directors of the Troy Youth Assistance and the Troy Community Coalition. In 1992, I was honored by the Boys and Girls Club of Troy for my 10 years of dedicated service building brighter tomorrows for the children of the Boys and Girls Club of Troy. I was also, that's here too. I was also honored by the Troy Community Coalition for 10 years of outstanding service to the community. In 1992, I was presented with the Service to Youth Award from Boys and Girls Club of America. In 1993, I was named Executive of the Year by Boys and Girls Clubs of America. On March 7th, 1994, The Eccentric did a cover story about me entitled "Director Creates a Safe Haven for Kids," March 7th, 1994. In July of 1994, I resigned from my position as executive director of Troy and moved out of Troy, buying a house in Royal Oak. What changed? I began to come out of the closet. Mayor Daniels, I am a lesbian, or to use your turn, I am one of the queers. In a community I had devoted my life to, I was ostracized and harassed for finally being at peace with who I was. I was 34-years-old, and I couldn't take the harassment dealt out by the so-called leaders in this community. People who had lauded my commitment to the community and to the Boys and Girls Club were now calling then-mayor Gene Stein to see what they could do about the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club being gay. Looking back, I guess maybe I should be grateful that they used the word gay and not queer. But there really wasn't anything to do because nothing changed in my ability to serve my community and be a positive role model for youth. Except that people were hateful in their comments, and I couldn't take it. It was years before I would again set foot in Troy. Don't get me wrong, some of my best friends are from Troy, and some of them are here tonight. Some of my Board of Directors at the Boys and Girls Club of Troy remain my closest friends to this day. But it only takes a few hateful people to say things that can create a tremendous amount of pain and hurt. It can take one person to say, "I think I'm going to throw away my I love New York carrying bag now that queers can get married," to hurt someone so deeply that it changes their life. I won't even begin to debate marriage equality. That's not what's at issue here. Hate is at issue, Mayor Daniels. What you said was hateful, and it hurt people. And the fact that the word queer is in the dictionary doesn't make it okay for you to use. There are several words in the dictionary that if I used tonight, I would be asked to leave this meeting. But the beauty of who I am is I know better. The sad part about this story is that my parents moved me to Troy because they thought I would be safer, and it turned out to be the town that caused me the greatest pain and hurt I have ever experienced. I now live in Royal Oak, where the mayor is someone I am honored to call my friend. For 11 years, I worked in Ferndale, where the mayor is someone I am honored to call my friend. You, Mayor Daniels, are not my friend and won't be until you find an appropriate way to apologize and actually mean it. I'm almost done. And find a way to understand how wrong it is that you called the group of individuals queer. I call for your resignation, madam. You were supposed to be a leader.
Thank you. Your five minutes is up, please.
Michael Donovan had to leave and said I could have his five minutes. His name was on the list. I'm going to finish. I call for your resignation. You were supposed to be a leader, and it would appear from your ignorant comment that you need to be open yourself to the community and learn more about who we are. You need to be, you need to lead this city with an open mind and heart. Until then, you are not fit to be a leader. A leader doesn't want problems to just go away. A leader addresses a problem and finds solutions.
Excuse me, your five minutes is up, please.
If it had been, it was people like you in 1994 that made me leave this community. Just want you to remember that. Thank you.
Attention order, let the people know. Attention order. Gerald? Gerald, order!
My name is Gerald Puskas. I've been a resident of Troy for 11 years. I don't know if the mayor's gay slur will have any impact on the business that comes before the city council, but I think to ignore the remark would be a disservice to our city and to the young people who are justifiably outraged by it and have shown the courage to speak up. When my wife and I moved here 11 years ago, there were two things about Troy that appealed to us. The quality of the schools and the great diversity of the people that live here. Within a short walking distance of my house are people from China, India, Egypt, Romania, and I'm sure many other countries I'm not aware of. There is no tension between these many different people because we all share the common goals of providing a nice home for our families, where the streets are safe, where our children can get a good education. Gay people cannot be identified by their appearance, but I know they're represented in every racial and ethnic group. The tolerance that we display for each other should be extended to them as well as they seek the equal protection under the law guaranteed to all citizens in the 14th Amendment of the Constitution. Our mayor's bigoted remarks strike at the very heart of this tolerance. Today she apologized, but this is just damage control. She says she can still represent the interests of all the citizens of Troy despite her prejudice towards gay people, but I don't see how that's possible. I'm under no illusion that she's had a change of heart. Towards now, it's up to the rest of the members of the council to ensure that the mayor's prejudices don't impact the decisions you make. Lastly, I'd like to say this to the students who chose to speak out. Don't give up the fight. It may not always seem like it, but your side is winning. Your generation is much more tolerant of gay people than the generations that came before you. And as you age and take over the responsibility of running this city and our country, you will have the chance to correct the mistakes we've made. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Higginbotham?
Madam Mayor, men and women of the Troy City Council, I appreciate your giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. You've heard some many eloquent stories, heart-wrenching stories, and I hope you will take all of those to heart when you leave here tonight and digest them deeply in your soul, what you've heard. Again, my name is Edward Bondi, and I am a lifelong resident of Royal Oak, so I will not be calling for Mayor Daniels' resignation either because that is not my position here I also, like many before me, have been a member and past board member of PFLAG, which stands for Parents and Friends of Lesbian and Gays. And you have a unique opportunity, all of you, especially Mayor Daniels, to be trained in sensitivity and diversity by attending one of their meetings, and I invite you. They meet right here in the city of Troy, just minutes from this location, on Coolidge, just north of Big Beaver, at the Lutheran Church of the Master. An affirming, welcoming, generous congregation of real Christians. I would encourage you, as has been mentioned, the Saturday classes, turning the bus around and going back to the school. I guess I'm appalled at the lack of diversity and sensitivity training that has been displayed, not by everyone on this council. I don't know each and every one of you personally, but certainly the remarks of Mayor Daniels reflect a total, total disregard and disrespect for people that you have offended unnecessarily. I would actually invite you not only to attend a PFLAG meeting, second Sunday of each and every month at 2:00 p.m., and sit in on a meeting. In addition, I would invite you to speak. We have guest speakers. Present your views to the people that you have offended the most and who are vitally affected by your views. You have a learning curve, and I hate to say it, but you are definitely at the bottom of that learning curve, and you've got a long road ahead. But maybe it won't take you too long. Attend a PFLAG meeting. Reach out to Equality Michigan. There are resources available. Sensitivity and diversity training is a fact of life in corporate America. I do not know of any manager, executive, or leader of a company that has not been required to attend diversity training and sensitivity training. I'm sure your police officers, your entry-level police officers have to go through that kind of training to be sensitized and be respectful of diversity in your community. I'd also like to give a hand to the heroes in the back of the room who are the young people that came out tonight to participate in democracy at its finest and have their say. When I was their age, I wouldn't dare have stood up here as I am now. It would have been unthinkable. But I applaud them tonight for showing such leadership in having their say and participating in democracy in this meeting tonight. I thank them for their comments tonight very much. And please, I hope you will seek diversity training and sensitivity training. Again, I invite you to a PFLAG meeting. It may be an eye-opener for you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Michelle Hodges. I'm president of the Troy Chamber of Commerce. I need to speak to you regarding both issues, and will do my best to make every word count. One, I just need to share with you, or tell the community that we share the frustration and concern that has been expressed tonight. And we pledge to work towards solutions that will ensure the highest quality leadership and would offer ourselves as a potential facilitator to reach out to some of the organizations that are here this evening and create some links and some understanding. And I also need to say that we celebrate and embrace diversity, and I am so proud of our community tonight. We are truly something special. And if we didn't know that before, we certainly know it now. And I would urge everybody here and everybody listening to not penalize the business community for what has happened. We have a plethora of things to offer. For example, the Somerset Collection, and all it's done with its Detroit shop and celebrating our region and what it does in the city lofts. We need to sustain them. We need to empower them to be able to continue to do that. So please don't penalize our business community and direct the concern and the frustration and the anger where it belongs, which is right here tonight at City Hall. So thank you for that, and again, I'm deeply touched. With regard to the Transit Center, voice of reason, no matter what the issue, no matter where, that is your Troy Chamber of Commerce. What does that mean? That means we look at the facts, we do our homework at every level, and we work hard to ground ourselves with all viewpoints, and we always ask the question, "Are we wrong? Tell me if I'm wrong." We have a commitment to a triple-A community. We do not want that bond rating diminished, and when we don't make the right investment decisions, that's what happens. And what results from that mindset? Clarity of vision. As Vince Lombardi said, "The only win is the one that is won fair and square." Therefore, it's important to you to know the facts of the issue before you tonight. And I know there've been many before me that have already shared those facts, and they've been gathered for years now. So I'm only going to focus on what I've heard are the deal-breakers, so to speak. One, the excessive costs. The typical rules of thumb in estimating construction costs can't be used here on a per-square-foot basis because of the extenuating amenities tied to the center, like the bridge. We have protective controls in place to control that cost, and the process to date has allowed you to express concern with that cost, and to do that at the 11th hour is irresponsible. Secondly, ridership. You heard from Amtrak tonight alone. Those numbers have been investigated by experts that are credible, and they've studied it, and they're there. And I urge you to look at that, including your own staff team. Crime. I will assure you that that center or that area is the least safe it's ever been today. And if you use the broken-window theory and you continue to invest there and you continue to upgrade it there, it will be a safe and viable asset here in our community. Fourth, the land. We have the land. We have title to that land. We own it. It's been successfully resolved in the courts twice. We are on solid legal footing with that land. Fifth, Birmingham. Birmingham left the project because it was unable to acquire a key piece of land that was hundreds, that the owner was only willing to accept hundreds of thousands of dollars more than the appraised value. The federal grants do not allow you to pay more than the appraised value for a piece of land tied to a federally funded project, nor does Birmingham, and Birmingham also has an anti-condemnation policy to be able to secure that land at the market value. So Birmingham and the land are not a viable argument. Also, not using debt money. This is budgeted, it's appropriated, and I think if you looked at the lines of expenditures that have caused the debt in this country, this project would not be on that line. We can't afford to lose this project. It's federally funded, those are our dollars. The land is free. It will cost $1.5 million later if we don't seize this opportunity now. Now I'm going to move quickly, and I'm going to shift some gears, because you know what? At the Troy Chamber, we believe in common ground and mutual purpose. The common ground is, you want reform, so do we. We want a transit center, we need a transit center, and I think you want assets that will help us thrive. And we all want a vital Troy. That's the common ground. So I ask you, where's the room for compromise? How do we get this project? How do we seize this low-hanging fruit? How can we maybe, perhaps the compromise is the chamber not only as a facilitator as it relates to the earlier issue I've spoken to, but also in this matter, how can we facilitate reform and efficiencies in government? How can we have a discussion about incentives and how projects are funded that is more palatable to all? Let's do that. The chamber will provide the leadership to make that happen. We'll find the win-win, but I hope and pray that we don't lose the Transit Center in the process. You're still not on board? I need to tell you, I met just this morning with Magna, Meritor, and AT&amp;T. They're all in favor. They're going to be communicating with you in writing. If we lose them, we lose our triple-A status, and I can assure you, this has gone to the highest levels of leadership there. Michelle, please wrap it up. Yes, I'm very close. Thank you, Mayor. Transit means access to the global marketplace, it means equality, it means communities of choice. Excuse me, Michelle, your time is up. It was just wrapping up. Thank you, Mayor. And I hope the point is clear that we all win if we play fair and square. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Madam Mayor and respected members of City Council, last week, I spoke about the benefit to the tune of $2.5 million to the families of students attending the University of Michigan at Ann Arbor and Wayne State University. If the Transit Center were to provide the students with the means for them to live at home and commute rather than living in dorms and paying roughly about $10,000 per year per student. Today, I want to touch upon the ridership, specifically connecting Troy with Metro Detroit Airport. Surveys conducted over the past four years by the Wayne County Airport Authority indicate that 7% to 12% of Oakland County's population uses the airport annually. Roughly 32 million visitors use the Metro Airport in a given year. Assuming that a similar 7% to 12% of Troy and Birmingham population use the airport, the number of such local residents would range from 515 to 883 members visiting the Metro Detroit per day. The high cost of parking anywhere, the high cost of parking at the Metro Airport anywhere from $8 to $12 a day translates to an economic cost to the residents of Troy and Birmingham to the tune of $1 to $1.5 million per year. If we add the potential benefits to the parents of students attending the Wayne State University and the University of Michigan, combined with the potential for visitors of Metro Airport to park here in Troy and drive, it would add up to a sizable $3.5 to $4.5 million in economic benefit to the community per year. You all have access to reams and reams of study about the Transit Center. I would urge you to listen to a true expert on transit issues. Susan Zielinski, Managing Director of the University of Michigan's Sustainable Mobility and Accessibility Research and Transformation Smart Program would be one such person. She can be reached at 734-763-1190. I hope you'll reach out to Ms. Susan and listen to what she may have to say about the Transit Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Mark. Mark Neme.
Hi, I'm Mark Neme. I'm a resident of Troy. First of all, I want to tell you, if you can't do the math, the next PFLAG meeting is January 8th, okay, at Lutheran Church of the Masters. I moved to Troy in 1968. I've been a resident on and off. I am a resident now. I had three kids go through school here. Everybody said a lot of stuff, so I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said. The one thing that hasn't been brought up, there is an initiative called No Name Calling Week, okay? It's in January. This year, it'll be the ninth year that it's going on, January 23rd to the 27th. I asked the Troy GSA to monitor the council and the mayor, okay? And let's ask them to be a part of No Name Calling Week this week. I mean, the council members and the mayor, okay? It's a good thing, okay? You guys all need to do it. You especially, obviously, need to do this, okay? I think it's important that you get involved. You make the Troy community get involved. It's not just for middle school and high school kids. Obviously, you did it. You're not in high school. You need to know this as well as anybody else. The website is nomenamecallingweek.org. I would encourage you all to get on there, look at it. Please, take time to consider it. Again, the Troy GSA will monitor and see if you guys will get involved. I think it would be a good idea for maybe some of you to go speak at the middle schools and at the high schools and encourage them to be involved in this No Name Calling Week. I think it's, everyone's wondering what you should do to make up for what you said. I think this is a perfect solution for what you should do. So I would hope you would consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. James Savage, is James Savage here? Is James Savage here tonight? Apparently, he's not. Martin Howellak? Good evening, Martin.
Good evening. My name is Martin Howellak, and up until about four weeks ago, I was sitting at the seat where Mr. Campbell is sitting, Councilman Campbell. Interestingly, in my 11 and a half years on the city council, when I was elected to city council in 2000, that is where I began, and that is also where I ended. And clearly, in my time in office, I've sat in many other seats as well. But I did want to retire from city government, and I believe that when elected officials leave office, it is good to let their successors take the reins and step aside and allow them to do that. However, there are many important items of business before this council at present and in the near future to which I have a deep attachment. One of them is the rules of procedure, and I'm probably the only person out of the 80 or 90 people that are speaking this evening that will be addressing this item. And it is clearly an item that is near and dear to me, and I think the folks in this room can appreciate the importance of open government and the ability of the public to petition its government. That applies at all levels. When I was elected to city council in 2000, all the way up until 2009, we made major inroads When I was elected to City Council in 2000, all the way up until 2009, we made major inroads in opening up the format of this chamber so that this was a chamber of the people. I believe when you're elected to a political position, whether that be City Council or the President of the United States or anything in between, one of the most important things that you can do is to listen to the people. Because if you do not have an opportunity for adequate input from your public, how do you know what is truly going on? How do you know what is in your mind is not representative, or I should say is representative of the people to whom you aspire to represent? It is with much dismay that in 2009, two years ago, I arrived at the City Council meeting and at the table, a substitute set of rules was submitted by, at that point, one of my colleagues. We had not the time to adequately vet the changes, but there were wholesale dramatic changes that choked the ability of the public to participate in the process and made it more cumbersome. The concern had always been, in my time in office, if you open up, not a concern that I shared, by the way, that if you open up, when I started, there was a big, big, if you will, about whether or not to even council, broadcast these meetings on television. There was a perception that if you broadcast council meetings on television, that the public would grandstand. But the contrary was true. It was the City Council that grandstanding. Likewise, when public comment was choked back two years ago, it was not the public that was grandstanding, it was the City Council that was grandstanding. Anytime there's been a major issue, and this, and many other issues have come before us that are major issues, and I would say a major issue is one that brings, say, 20 or more people to the council chamber. Anytime there's been a major issue, and there have been many since 2000 when I first was elected, and many before that, they have been council-initiated, whether that be the ballpark or the baseball stadium or the conference center. And let me know if I'm getting to my five minutes. But it's not the public that grandstands, it's the council that grandstands. In short, there's a substitute set of rules that have been submitted. Those are essentially the rules that existed up until November of 2009. They've been vetted by many city councils. They included many more opportunities for the public to comment. You know, the public should be able to speak on an item during the agenda without having to speak four hours before it happens. You know, there may have been, there were people that spoke on the transit center hours ago and that may or may not even be addressed this evening. There are other items on the agenda. What if somebody spoke at 8 o'clock on that and it's not even addressed until 1:00 in the morning? By the way, it's 10:55 and in an hour, you're going to have to extend your meeting because there's a 12 midnight sunset. That's all these changes represent. And openness is one of those issues, which is neither Republican or Democrat, nor Conservative, nor Liberal, nor Independent, or Libertarian. It's pretty much universal that members in this community want the right and the ability to properly petition their city council. I implore the City Council to investigate and compare your current set of rules of procedures to those that existed up until November of 2009. Councilman Fleming, I know, was here at that particular meeting and so was Councilman Slater, and so was Councilwoman, or Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis. Congratulations, by the way. There's my five minutes. So please consider making those changes so that the public can have a better opportunity to petition this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Marianne Bernardi, and I'd like to call Cory Hall, Laura Titangelo, Pedro Sarzina, Kim Worth, Gerard Stager, and Diane Zaimontowich. If you'll please come stand in line. Good evening, Mrs. Bernardi.
Good evening. Hello, Mayor and Council. I'd like to talk about the transit center and if I have a chance, maybe, and some courage, I might make a few statements about the other issue. I'm not sure if I should, that's so complex, I don't know how you could even address it in five hours, let alone five minutes. At any rate, I do want to say, what I found on Facebook today regarding the transit center from a man who I will keep his name anonymous because I didn't get permission, but I thought it was so well-written, I thought it deserved to be brought here before council. He writes, "Troy Times reports, we will spend $8.4 million on the transit center that will serve 250 people per day by year 2027." He says, "Have you lost your mind? The other claim is that the operating cost will be $30,000 a year. We have lost our minds to even consider this issue. Yesterday, the 2:40 train arrived at 3:30 and two people, two people got off." Now, I, most people who know me will know this is a true statement, I'm not a numbers person. They know that. I'm not a numbers person, but I know from those numbers that when you have only two riders, it screams waste to me. And this is hogwash when they say, "Build it and they will come." They need to be there and then you build it. Who in their right mind builds a multimillion-dollar structure on land that you do not have clear title to? And I, that is a true statement and I cannot believe that Michelle Hodges came up here and made it sound as if you have clear title to the land. We do not have clear title to the land. And who would build a multimillion-dollar structure on that? Would you do it personally? Would you do it with your own money? You have to be insane. To link the transit center to this Facebook issue is nothing but political opportunism. They are two totally different issues and I would ask the public and people on council to keep them separate. They are separate issues. It is also amazing to me to see Michelle Hodges come before you, she's head of the DDA, or part of the head of it, and coming before you, pushing the transit center when it is estimated that by 2015, the DDA will default on its own debt and who knows if that won't fall into the laps of the residents. Okay, that's all I had to say. No, no, I have one more thing to say. The man on Facebook went on to say, "Build the track for high speed, one. Run it on time, two. Attract riders, three. Then, call me for a terminal." And I say, "Sign me up for that very same plan." I'll be for it. But not now. Not with what this current situation is. And I don't know if I should delve into this, but I guess when I'm standing in the middle of my living room crying and my husband comes in from work, "What's wrong?" Maybe I should say something because yes, we're all hurt and I think you're hurt as well. And I cannot believe that you're the same person today that you were before Friday. And I feel for you, I feel for all, I'm probably too sensitive a person, but I feel for anyone who is hurting, anyone who is the subject of cruelty. That's why it hurt me that you said that and you even called me a cockroach because I have a big liberal part of me. I know, not personally, but in that talk, you know? And I have a big conservative part. So I don't even know who I am. I have an identity crisis. But I respond, when people criticize liberals, you know, hurts me. When they criticize conservatives, that hurts me too. So I just can't pigeonhole myself. It hurt me, it hurts very much what you said about them. But I know you're hurting and I personally have never in my life refused someone's apology because I think it's hard to apologize. You have to admit to yourself that you did something wrong. Then you have to face that person and you have to admit to them you did something wrong. And you have to hope that they're going to be kind to you. And sometimes they are and sometimes they're not. And we saw that tonight. Some people were extremely kind and I so appreciated them and I think they came up with good suggestions, the sensitivity training, wonderful. Those who were asking you to step down, I don't agree with that one single bit. Anyways, I wanted to call out some of the people who were so kind in the way they expressed it from their heart, but I don't have time. But thank you anyways.
Thank you so much. Actually, Cory Hall is signed up next. Cory Hall, and then Laura Titangelo, Pedro Sarkoza, Kim Worth, and then you, Jerry. I'm sorry, the order, I called it too quickly, I think. Cory Hall, seems as though Cory's left. Laura Titangelo?
Hello, Mayor Daniels.
Hello.
Well, I came here three and a half hours ago to say thank you to you and the council for reopening the library on Saturdays, but I think that's kind of irrelevant at this stage of the game. I stayed this long because my heart goes out to you for what you've had to deal with tonight. You know, I'm sorry for all the hateful, I'm sorry that you had to have so much hate thrown at you for a hateful word that you said that I truly feel you're sorry for. And I hope that everybody can forgive you, that you can find a way to make it right because I know that you have the city's best interest at heart. And I just hope that everybody can look forward with this.
Thank you, Laura. Pedro Sarkoza, Pedro? Okay, Pedro must have left. Kim Worth, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Worth, resident of Troy. I wasn't planning to come tonight or my hair would look better and a lot of other things and I would have had dinner, but I was driving home and really had to think about my reasons to be here. So what was important to me is really very selfish. I needed to see other people who were outraged. I needed to be able to say to my children, my friends, my church, my family that I spoke out, I need my children to see how important this is to me even when I'm often on their case about using words that I don't approve of. I want them to see the democratic process. I was actually embarrassed that some of us spoke poorly of other people who disagreed with us. I don't support that. And I wanted to leave here feeling better. And you know what I do? A lot of people spoke out, a lot of people had the opportunity to talk about how they feel. And after this, you'll make your decisions and we'll move on to the next big issue. But the media needs to know that not everyone in Troy feels the same way and that we welcome people to our businesses, we welcome them to my neighborhood, I want people to move in. I came here for the diversity, I'll stay here for the diversity. And I just want people to know that not everyone in Troy agrees with Mrs. Daniels. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerard Stager? Gerard?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Daniels and members of council. I came to talk about the transit center. More and more, we understand it's a bad idea, we should not have the transit center. And people will say, "Well, it's free money, why do you want to turn that down?" But Councilman Fleming pointed out very shrewdly at the recent meeting that it's not like getting money for roads where we already have a system in place to pay for the roads. This is something brand new and it will cost money. And here we are in a modern city, Troy, Michigan Incorporated in the 1950s, and we should think of our namesake ancient Troy that took the Trojan horse. If you remember the story of the Trojan horse, the people of Troy got a gift of a horse, they thought it was really cool, and they took it into their city walls and it turned out that there were enemy soldiers in that horse. And they opened the gates of the city at night and the city of Troy was conquered. Well, the transit center isn't quite like a Trojan horse, but it is a gift that has a negative consequence. If you take the transit center, once the $8.4 million is used up, Troy's stuck with the bill. It's been pointed out that an AGA study has not been completed, not all of the work has been completed. If there's a cost over run, Troy is stuck. It's been estimated now that to operate it will cost over $30,000 a year and there's been no commitments from any tenants to pay for that. It will cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep it going. We've had an assistant city manager do a lot of work on it and also our city attorney has worked on the transit center and put in time. It's probably been tens of thousands of dollars of personnel that they've put in. They are two of our more highly capitated employees. We're paying money now. It was pointed on the Troy Times that $420,000 was spent on the transit center, although they did mention a $350,000 reimbursement, but still that $70,000 lost. And here we are in Troy where we didn't even adequately plow the streets last year. I know our newly-elected city council has taken action to safeguard that and I know it was a big election in the campaign. We shouldn't spend money on something that we can't handle when we're not even taking care of our adequate basic services as well as we should. People think that this will result in more transit. It will not. It will be a fancier station at the Birmingham-Troy border. There will still be three Amtracks going into Pontiac and three going out. And speaking of Pontiac, they've had a transit center for a number of years, they just refurbished it this year, they call it the Transporter Transportation Center. Has it revived Pontiac? Pontiac is an economic mess. Pontiac is on their third emergency financial manager. A transit center will not bring business to us, but it will take money out of her pocket. We should not put money into land that is still not legally settled. That land is still under appeal. What Michelle Hodges said was not a correct statement. She doesn't live in the city of Troy and perhaps she hasn't followed things as well as she could. But that land is still under appeal and we're going to spend more money and maybe lose the land. And that land can be returned under the property tax rules to help finance revenue for the city of Troy. The transit center is a modern-day Trojan horse. A gift can have consequences, you shouldn't automatically accept it. Ms. Mayor Daniels has pointed out, we could have a role in helping reduce the federal budget deficit if we see an opportunity, and we do. And other members of council have pointed that out, and other members of the community. The transit center is going to be expensive, it will cost you money. It's not free money, it's not without obligation. It's a bad idea, a very bad idea. I strongly ask that you do not accept the money and do not go further with the transit center. And I thank you, Mayor Daniels and members of council for your time.
Thank you. Diane Z?
Good evening. My name is Diane Zigmuntowicz and I'm here, I've come to comment on the Mass Transit Center and I know the board has been looking for input. However, I first do have to briefly comment, share the majority concern expressed here tonight, Mayor Daniels, regarding the comments you've made. Regarding the transit center, I'm a 24-year Troy resident. I'm a fiscal conservative, typically voting conservative. While taking over the years all these stated benefits into consideration, I also share the concerns and questions regarding transit center and all the projections and issues that we've been grappling with over the years. However, Troy has come too far and has invested too many resources and has overcome too many barriers along the way in this entire trip and journey trying to move in this direction. And I am, you know, including the Grand Sacoa lawsuits and all of these other issues. My vote is to move forward. And one of the main reasons I'm here is that, Mayor Daniels, in our discussion when you stopped by at my home the other day, last week, I became, you left me very concerned regarding your stated potential direction and which you may be attempting to lead the board in that direction. You stated that you're in support of public transit, however, with the, maybe we should hold for a number of reasons, but what you had in mind is that with a 21% fund balance, that maybe we as a community can start saving a little bit of money along the way and moving over the years to do that and then potentially the city of Troy can front and pay for all of that money. And I've got a real problem with that. First of all, I do not feel that the 21% fund balance is an accurate representation of the situation and what our current community and the city of Troy is in. We have, our budget of necessity has been severely cut and we had to do that and I'm fully supportive of it to have, you know, be moving out of what we're doing at this point in time. But it is very much below what our actual requirements are. And when you take a raw dollar number and put that against a much, much, much smaller base, it suddenly has a percent that flies much, much higher than what reality really is. And I think if you are potentially moving to have the board go in a direction of, let's start, since we've got 21%, we can start saving money for the transit center. And I just, I was very concerned with that direction that you stated, I think it's wrong. If there is, if the board feels, if the council feels that there are available funds from the fund balance, I think those should be allocated to the severe things that we have already had to cut within our city. It's not like there's a looming, you know, pot of money out there just waiting for something to be, you know, to be used for. We've had to severely cut, we're not looking at adequate representation of what our budget is, and I think we need to be responsible in moving forward. So, there's a lot of a So there's a lot of opinions for and against the transit center. I happen to be, as a conservative and whatever in viewing everything, I'm a move-forward vote. However, the time is for a decision now. It's not one of these, let's delay this and let's look at this in the future, whatever. There's been too many things done and too many things put in place. A decision needs to be made, and I know that there's one coming up in the very—this month. So let's move forward, one way or the other, and do the right thing with the budget and our fund balance and funds. Thank you.
Thank you. John Delora? Michael Connors? Bruce Bloomingdale?
I'm a man of mercy, so I'm going to be mercifully brief. My name is John Delora. I'm vice chairman of the National Association of Railroad Passengers. I'm here, obviously, to speak about the intermodal station. The attraction of an intermodal station is that it takes large numbers of people and brings them into a relatively compact area, which makes that area an attractive place for living, investing, and working. I've heard a lot of stuff here tonight, and this PowerPoint diatribe that went on earlier is utterly irrelevant to what you have to consider. The issue before you isn't for Troy to subsidize mass transit. It's not for Troy to subsidize Amtrak or high-speed rail. It's whether or not you're going to have an intermodal center. And you can take my word or somebody else's word, but there's a much easier way for you to make up your minds on this issue. Talk to the people who have already been through this process. I have with me addresses and contact information for every Amtrak city in Michigan, including the mayors, the chambers of commerce, economic development corporations. I've worked with all of them over the years that I've been involved in this. And the ones I suggest you contact first are the ones with an asterisk, a single asterisk next to them, because all of those cities have been through this. They've built an intermodal center, and they've seen the results, and they can tell you whether or not it's worth your time to do it. I suggest you guys spend maybe an hour on the telephone. I've got email contacts in here. Do some due diligence. Find out what the results were. Ask them very simply. If you had this to do over again, would you? And the answer is going to be very clear, because, as I said, I've worked with all of these people over the years. And one postscript that I'd like to make—oh, one other thing I'd like to point out is every single chamber of commerce in an Amtrak city supports it. And I don't recall chambers of commerce being regarded as bastions of socialism. One other point I'd like to make out—it came up a couple of times—that having a transit center is going to bring crime out here. I'm a retired police officer after 28 years. Think this through. Drug dealers don't do business, or there's a lot of witnesses. All right? I'm done. I'm going to hand this off as contact list for each one of you.
If you could give it to the court, please. Michael Connors? Michael Connors?
Mayor?
Good evening.
Council members. It's getting late. I'm not going to use anywhere near my five minutes. But I have known Mayor Daniels for a little over a year and a half. I have never heard her use that word before. I had no idea it was ever on her Facebook page. And I think that someone earlier tonight said that a lot of people here could further their own cause—
Michael, if you could talk to the council, please.
Okay. A lot of people here would further their own cause if they would be a little bit more understanding themselves. And I think they could do that by forgiving you. You've apologized. I think that you deserve a chance to see how well you can do as a mayor, and I beg that you don't resign. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Michael. Bruce Bloomingdale? Bruce? Bruce must have had to leave. Rob Hendrickson? And then Cheryl Settle?
Good evening, council, Ms. Daniels. My name is Rob Hendrickson. I've been a resident of Troy for 21 years. Proud most of the time, not so much tonight. It's been—it's been really sad to watch your reaction to a lot of heartfelt testimony by people, and I have yet to see you actually indicate any real empathy for the positions that have been brought before you, and I'm very saddened by that. Before I get into what I wanted to say, I wanted to ask a question about the transit center. Has anybody here in the council heard from Elbrooke Patterson, the county executive, or the governor of Michigan, Rick Snyder, who are, I'm sure, very vested in the potential for having an $8.5 million investment in our community, especially Elbrooke Patterson? I would think that it would be very important for him to see that kind of investment come into our town and not go someplace else to someplace else in the country, as we know it will if we turn it down. I really didn't think it was quite possible for me to respect you any less than after what you and your organization—the one that you're so deeply part of, Troy Citizens United—have done to shut down the legitimate efforts of citizens who actually care about this city to keep it viable. Now I read that you wonder why people despise you, or words to that effect. I can't speak for everyone who opposed your election as mayor, but here's why I feel the way I do. I believe you lied repeatedly about the percentages of the original millage designed to keep our police force intact and our nature center and library functioning at their previous levels, thus creating needless chaos across Troy and hindering smart governments of it. I believe you and your father—and your followers purposely placed misleading proposals on the second ballot attempt to keep the library open. Proposal one likely would have passed had it not been for the duplicitous efforts of your political group and the councilman you had feeding you misleading information and sending out letters meant only to confuse the voting public further. Your associate, Ed Kempen, confused voters further with a bogus petition sponsored by the Friends of the Library with No New Taxes, when you had to know that that was impossible. Yet you backed him with all your might. Now, as mayor, you've been forced to confront the truth that the budget you spent years calling bogus is, in fact, the real budget after all. You either did—never did your homework, or you willfully misrepresented it to the voters of Troy as if you were speaking fact. I believe you repeatedly lied about the salaries of hard-working public servants to win points for your position, referring to them as perks and pleasures over and over. No matter what the truth—no matter that the truth was far different from what you said, it didn't matter to you. The truth did not matter. You are friends with a man, a Birmingham resident, whose racism and bigotry are in full display on Facebook pages for all to see, and you have repeatedly pushed to have him speak before the citizens of Troy on a subject he should have no concern about, the transit center. He spoke tonight. You call him an expert, yet offer no evidence of his expertise. And now your own bigotry and small-mindedness has been exposed in your own words, gaining Troy worldwide attention for all the wrong possible reasons. You don't care who you've hurt, and you know that's true. You're only apologizing for getting caught, not for what you said. All the lies, the bigotry, the falsehoods, you don't represent me or my family. If you had any honor or dignity or just plain common sense, you would realize your remaining in office can only damage further the city you claim to love. You need to resign, and soon. If you don't, you will be recalled. I guarantee it.
Cheryl Seto? Cheryl Seto? Lynn Bell? Lynn Bell? Tom Crent? Tom?
Good evening, mayor and council. Two weeks ago, I explained why the Troy Transit Center is a vital part of Governor Rick Snyder's rail plan for Michigan. Not only is our state focusing on improvements to this rail link that ties Pontiac, Detroit, to Ann Arbor, and then onward to Chicago, it's also Oakland County behind it, the Automation Alley, Troy business leaders and residents that have expressed the need for our multimodal transportation hub here in Troy. This evening, I want to focus on the value of what it will bring to businesses and residents in the city of Troy and in the region. It's an $8.5 million investment in Troy, and Mayor Daniels and Councilmen Teetz and Henderson don't want it. They don't want the jobs that it'll create, the financial boost to our local economy, and the benefits to the traveling public. There has never been a better time than now to have an $8.5 million development project come into Troy, but they want to give it to another town. I'd like to know what $8.5 million economic development project the mayor and those two councilmen are going to bring to Troy next year. The following is a quote made by Mayor Daniels during the study session on November 21st, a couple of weeks back. "The risk is so great to this project at this time that I think, as a leadership city, we should say, 'No, thank you.' Why don't we suggest that the federal government take that $8.6 million and pay off some debt with it?" I mean— I mean, that's what I'd like to see the government do with $8.6 trillion. Of course, she really meant a million. The fact is, it won't go back to the federal government. It will go to another city that understands the value of an $8.5 million benefit to their community. As for the mayor's statement, "The risk is so great." Where is the risk? A possible $30,000 a year for maintenance? And most, if not all, of that will be paid by leasing agreements with Amtrak and other vendors. I think she's trying to make a mountain out of a molehill when it comes to risk. Chicago is a big draw to many residents in Troy, especially our youth. Let me give you a little quick cost comparison of a trip from Troy to Chicago. A one-way airline ticket from Metro Airport to Chicago is $168. The cost of driving is about $166 based on the IRS calculation for personal vehicle use at 55.5 cents a mile. The train ticket is about $60. All three modes of travel will take about four—to—I'm sorry, five to six hours door-to-door. If you fly, you have to go through security scanning. If you drive, you've got to focus on the road. But if you take the train, you can—the time is your own. You can sit back, relax, do some work, or just read a book. Let's see, $166 or $60? To me, it's not a tough decision. Rail is the best value for your money and your time. What about energy use? I looked at the presentation that Mr. Wise put forth in the minutes, and one of the slides in his presentation showed the different energy uses for the various modes of transportation. I find it interesting that the category for all rail transit showed lower energy use per passenger mile than airplanes, cars, buses, and— it was—I can't remember what it was, passenger trains or something. I mean, so—so, anyway, the point I want to make tonight is rail provides the best value in terms of dollars, time, and energy use. I hope everyone on council will support the economic development in Troy and vote yes in favor of continuing the forward process of our transit center. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Sharfenkamp? Laura Sharfenkamp? Toni Cruz? William Colgar? Mandy Hess? Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor Daniels and Troy City Council. I'd just like to be very brief and state that as I was listening to all the discussion on the transit issue, I recalled a friend of ours who was here, living in Troy for a number of years, from Germany, and he said that they voted for conservatives on the national level and liberals at the local level because they wanted their nation as a whole to prosper, but they wanted the money to come locally. And it concerns me because the—that Americans are adopting the same kind of attitude, that we want the dollars for our local community, but we're not thinking about the overall financial responsibility we have for our nation's debt. And I think that the core of integrity is consistency, and I'm concerned about it fiscally, and I also have concerns about it with regard to your comments, but also with regard to comments I hear from both conservatives and liberals in terms of flippant statements made about other human beings. It does—it worries me that the discourse in our society has become so coarse that I'm concerned about my children as conservatives not being able to speak about their opinions, even as I'm teaching them to be sensitive to the needs and lives of other human beings, whether or not I believe what their life choices are morally correct. I think that respect is key in our society. I'm very concerned that the level of respect is not always equitable, whether it's in the media or in a public forum like this or in a classroom. I think that we need to be as diligent about requiring of ourselves what we expect of our elected officials. I don't believe that as a citizen, my responsibility for my speech is any less than yours is. I think that anyone who comes up here and demands proper respect from the public officials should exercise the same standard in their own lives. And honestly, I think that it is important that we accept apologies and we make them. And I'm happy to see that you made one. I think we should accept it as a community, and I think we should talk to one another as human beings and not as liberals and conservatives. I think we ought to have those conversations and not avoid our neighbors. And I think we ought to talk about policy in—not only as individuals, but in our schools and with our children. What is conservative political ideology? What is liberal? Why do they—what are the foundations of these ideas? And discuss them in a way that is not full of ad hominem attacks. I'm concerned about it. I'm—I'm grieved, but I'm thankful that there is a renewed concern for fiscal responsibility. And I hope that whether you're, you know, here as a conservative or a liberal and what your reasons are, that you examine your own self, even as you are asking the mayor to do. I think she should. I've never used the word queer. I never would. God willing, I would never say something that would hurt someone like that. However, we are all capable of doing something that is not in line with our core values. And I think it's unfair for anyone to act as though they are not, that they are above that, because we all need the grace of God, and we all need one another to be civil in our society. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Laura. Toni Cruz?
Good evening, your honor.
Good evening.
City council, members of staff. My name is Toni Cruz. I'm an 18-year resident of Troy, and I want to speak briefly on two issues. First of all, the transit center. I am not going to try to argue the merits of the demographics of one choice over another because I dare say I've seen a lot of compelling arguments for both sides. My argument, frankly, against the transit center is very, very simple. Money that is easily gotten is not going to be nearly as well or as carefully pondered for spending as money that's hard-earned. And the argument that, oh, we should do this because we have $8.5 million of federal money that's at our disposal. Well, at the risk of sounding flippant, that money did not come from the tax fairy. Came from the same pockets, purses, and wallets that fund our school taxes, our city taxes, our state taxes, et cetera. And as citizens, not only of Troy, not only of Michigan, but of the United States of America, it's our responsibility to ask ourselves, hey, am I going to be any less served by the fine service I get from riding a train to Chicago versus taking an airplane there? If I have to go to a little whistle stop in Birmingham versus going through a beautiful, air-conditioned ceramic-lined tunnel from the corner of Coolidge and Maple to Birmingham? I dare say it would be real nice. Part of me says, boy, that would be slick. But the practical side of me, that would like to see our money spent the way I spend, the way I'm compelled to spend my own money, no, we can't afford this, and it's not right to go there. The argument I heard about the transportation system in Switzerland is very, very compelling. I have been to Europe for several years of my life, not as a tourist, but as someone who lived there, both as a member of a very, very narrow who lived there, both as a member of a very, very narrow middle class when I was a youngster, and much more recently, about 20 years ago, as a member of a launch team for a plant for a company that I was working. I was there for three years. And the side that tourists don't see about beautiful transit centers and mass transit is that in Europe, if you're making much more than $40,000 a year, you are in a 70, that is, seven zero, 7% tax bracket. So, for all the largesse that the government doles out, it doesn't come free, folks. Okay? So, that's something that, that's the other side of the coin we need to see. The other thing I want to discuss very, very briefly, Mayor, you have been faced very recently with accusations of not representing a certain group of people, and this is simply because you expressed a traditional moral point of view regarding marriage. Now, granted, you chose one specific word that your opponents very, very cleverly used as a little barbed hook right between your fingernail and your flesh to say, ah, gotcha. Okay? I want to remind the audience here that when I say the Pledge of Allegiance, it's not to the democracy for which it stands, it's to the republic for which it stands. And you have been elected to represent all people, and I am supremely confident that you're going to do that with every fiber of your being that you swore to on the day that you took office. But your job is not represent the ideologies and worldviews of everyone that is a member of your constituency. You should no sooner feel compelled to attend a parade that stands for a lifestyle that you happen to disagree with than I would invite a Jewish or Muslim friend to a pork roast. What makes us humans, what adds to our humanity, is not whether or not a government or a people or a popular culture can compel us all to think the same way, wave our heads the same way, but how we treat one another in spite of our differences. I want to remind all of you, as well as people within a range of my voice, that your First Amendment rights apply even when you say things that are less than popular. The position that you took, the words that you chose, were chosen out of passion, they were chosen out of your sincere, personal feelings, and they were not chosen as your position as mayor. They were chosen many weeks before you even ran for mayor, and you did this as a private citizen. It seems to me that there's a new form of bullying going on, and that bullying is to accuse anyone of hate speech when they say something that is controversial or that has a great deal of dissent. Considering the fact that you made these remarks long before you became mayor, I think your apology was more than gracious, and we should move on, we should accept it. And I would like to remind, if you'll tolerate me for one more moment, I would like to remind the citizens who would call for an unilateral reversal of the will of the people of Troy, that they should be a little bit more liberal with their charity directed towards fellow citizens, more tolerant of opposing viewpoints, and a little more progressive in their efforts to oppose bullying against those whose points of view are incongruent with their own. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chicago. Excuse me, excuse me, out of order.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to address a couple of points. I've been here before talking about the Transit Center. There were some misrepresentations here, I believe, tonight. I believe that if, I would like to have in the council comments afterwards a verification that, in fact, the title is in, for the Transit Center is in the, is clear at the moment. We do have the, and Michelle Hodges was correct. Obviously, there is a challenge, but we still have the title. They've got to take it away from us at this stage. There is a couple of other things that we talked about a week ago or two weeks ago, I can't remember exactly when it was. The entire projection for ridership was based purely on rail. It's not on any kind of commuter service. Commuter service would add dramatically, hopefully, to the ridership. There's no question about that. It also was based on the fact that, right now, it takes anywhere from five and a half to seven hours to get to Chicago, and you have a lousy track, and you drive, as someone brought up, it's 29 miles an hour through Dearborn and through Detroit because it's a lousy track. They're fixing that. Once you do get a four-and-a-half-hour trip to Chicago, it really will make a heck of a difference. It will draw people to Troy. Troy will become a destination from Chicago and beyond because who wants to drive an hour to the airport and be there for an hour, an hour on the plane, another hour to get to where you're going, and where a lot of people are coming out to visit businesses in Oakland County and in Troy? The ridership thing is an excuse because it will go up dramatically, number one, when the track is faster, and it gets down to four-and-a-half hours, and when they do provide a commuter service, which is going to happen. Commuter trains don't cost $11. The trains that cost $11 to go to Detroit are long-distance cars. They're meant for people to sit in for four hours, not for people to stand and go 30 minutes downtown. Those cars are different. They take more capacity, and they move quicker, and they're certainly not as fancy as you get otherwise, and you end up with about a $3 ride to Detroit instead, when that finally does happen. The Ann Arbor to Detroit commuter service is already approved. Once that is, once that's in place and proven, the remainder coming up to Pontiac and to Troy will add to it. I've heard the chamber marginalized several times by saying that we don't represent the city. I am a resident of Troy, have been for 34 years. I also happen to be a member of the chamber for the last eight years, and I happen to sit on that board. The board unanimously, representing 725 businesses in this community unanimously, is for the Transit Center. Those are the people that pay 42% of your taxes. They don't get a vote, but they pay 42% of your taxes, and if you're going to ignore them, they're not going to, you're going to be paying, instead of 42%, they'll end up paying 35, and then 30, and you'll see them run out of town. The money is there. It's going to go to another town. The risk is $30,000, you're right, and there might be some additional costs in that. But the $30,000 doesn't count the Amtrak lease contract. It doesn't include the contract for the rental car agencies and the others that have verbally committed that they will, they'll take residence there. This is really such a low risk. It's just beyond me that people, and if you're doing Troy first, the major comments I hear against the Transit Center is our national issues. This is not a national issue. This is Troy. This is money that we put in. Finally, we're going to get some back. This is a Troy issue, and I hear about Wisconsin and Florida. That's not us. This is our money that, finally, we're going to get some back, and you guys are going to give it away. I mean, it just absolutely is beyond my comprehension of why we would want to even consider that. It is a major opportunity. Eventually, when you do, when you get the other pieces together that are a part of the regional Transit Center, you will be able to go to a ballgame. The number of people using taxis will be so much bigger that you can get a taxi for three, four, or five bucks to get to the Transit Center. You could get downtown for two bucks, for three bucks. But round trip, it's going to be less than parking in Detroit, and you don't have to worry about having a bottle of wine at dinner and worry about having to drive when you get home. There are tremendous opportunities for our future. Those people that don't believe and don't think in the future are the ones that'll put us at Troy of the city of tomorrow, yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Chicago.
Mayor? Yes. Just to remind you of the midnight, that it's almost 12:00 AM.
I would like to see if we would continue the meeting, waive the rule to end the meeting at midnight and complete the meeting this evening. That's what I would like to do. I don't know what the council thinks. Is there any discussion? Suspend the rules. Which rule is that?
It would be rule number 16.
Well, I would like to make a motion to suspend rule number 16 and extend the meeting. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, it's 26. I'm sorry.
Well, that's the rule I'd like to suspend, then, 26. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Brought forth by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Slater.
Mayor.
Discussion?
Do we have to set a time certain to suspend the meeting, or just until we're complete? Question?
Tony Bloom?
No.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, traditionally, a resolution that does indicate a time that you would end by.
Is that?
Is there a moment you would like?
Is that necessary?
You could, you would need to set a time to end by, yes.
And if we don't end by that time, we'd have to suspend?
Then you would suspend the rules again, yeah.
Discussion?
I'd like to.
Councilman Fleming?
Yes, I'd like to amend your resolution to have the time at 1 o'clock, 1 a.m. And if we don't finish and people are still able to stay awake, and you want to suspend it again and extend it again, but I'd like to move that we end the meeting at 1 a.m.
Is there a second?
Yes. If there's not a second, you just go on, and there's no time.
Okay, so there's no time limit. A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the list is Mandy Hess. I believe I called out for Mandy Hess. She's not here any longer. John Lewis. Tony Haddad? Mr. Haddad?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Mayor, city council, staff. I am not a very good speaker, but I am a good server. I served the community of Troy for a long time, in the school, and all the games, and all the hallways and all that. I'd like to start with, because I was out of town working, I didn't have the opportunity to congratulate the newcomers, you know, for the city council. And Ms. Mayor, congratulations, and to Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Teetz, and to Mr. Henderson. And again, I love you all, okay? And I don't know enough about the transit, so I leave it to the people that know more, so I'm not going to comment about that. And I feel really, you know, hurt how, you know, some people talked about Ms. Daniel. I love you, Ms. Daniel, and I will really, you know, pray that God, you know, will give you the patience to serve this community, to continue doing your job. And it is not fair, you know, like, for, you know, like, I want to be very honest with you, and I always say the truth. A long time ago, I used to hate the gay and lesbian community, honestly. And it was about 10 years ago, somebody that I really know for a long time, he disclosed himself to me that he is, you know, a gay, you know, person. And I was like, really, very shook up, you know, and from that moment, and of course, also, with my son, it was an accident, it was near death, and I asked God, you know, to help me to give him my son, and he gave me my son, and I said, I'm yours if you give me my son. So, I belong to, you know, like, you know, like, to clear feeling, you know, and work, you know, for the people around me and my family and everything. So, I'm beginning to love, you know, gay and lesbian, just like I love anybody else. And the only thing that bothered me about the gay and lesbian community, that they, you know, they tried to push that on me, you know, push that on my community, on my families, on my schools. I disagree with that. I follow my church. My church say that, I've heard it many times, that being gay or lesbian is a sin. That doesn't mean I dislike that person. I don't believe in violence. I wish I can go deer hunting. I can't. I can't kill a deer. I can't kill a bird. I can't hurt nobody. I can't hate nobody. I will never, ever go to church and take communion. If I have any hard feeling about somebody, I skip that Sunday. I will not take communion because it's, you know, I'd be hypocrite, you know. So, again, you know, I really, you know, think the people that offended you, Ms. Daniel, they were wrong. They have, they're entitled to their opinion, okay? They said what they want. It's a free country, and I have the same right, whether I am one and there are 100. Doesn't make any difference. I have the same right. So, I say that whatever they say to you that offended you, I know offended you, it goes back to them 10 times. I would say that. And that gentleman that worked for the Ardasys, you know, for 40 years, he forgot to tell the council about the corruption we have in a Catholic, you know, church. I'm Catholic, okay? I have a close friend, a close relative, okay? A priest took his wife, and he lived with her, and he still conducts mass at the church, and I called the Ardasys, probably where the gentleman worked, and nobody helped me.
Mr. Haddad, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you. Lawrence Porter? And Jack DeChalles?